To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation. We have our invoker tonight. Oh, excellent. Mary Cubes, correct?
Right.
Come on towards the microphones, we can all hear you even on Channel 11.
Oh, no.
And it's appropriate that you're from Church of the Ascension?
I am.
We have your troop 343, the Boy Scouts here, from troop 343 out of Church of the Ascension here tonight, too. So, thank you for giving us our invocation.
Okay. O loving and almighty God, Creator of all the beauty that surrounds us, we thank you. Be with our gathering this evening as we continue serving our community for the good of all. We ask your blessing on us so that we may continue our commitment through wisdom, justice, and cooperation to improve the families and businesses who find a home in Fountain Hills. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mary. All right, I don't see a lot of our commissioners here, but I get to present some words. And I'm sorry, oh, roll call, please. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Appreciate it, thank you. Something I don't always forget. Roll call. And now we get to give some recognition to folks that have served us as commissioners. Have a whole bunch of certificates of appreciation for our commissioners. And if you are a commissioner here tonight, please come on forward and I'll present you with a certificate of recognition. And before I do that, I wanted to first share the words of appreciation from up here, and then I'll come down and present the plaques or the certificates to those that are here. I know Grace is not here tonight. Grace Jacobs from our Community Center Advisory Commission, but I wanted to recognize Grace. She's been a contributing member to the Community Center Advisory Commission since January 2008, and she's always been an active participant and a very well-prepared member. She finds the details of the commission operation most interesting, has been instrumental in establishing the community center's policies and procedures, and in instituting the center's monthly activity report. The commission will miss Grace, but she will continue to contribute to the Fountain Hills community as a member of Senior Services Advisory Commission. Grace will be a great asset to that commission, and we thank Grace for her contributions. Kathy Kelly, Community Center Advisory Commission. Kathy was a member of the Community Center Advisory Commission from February 2010 till December 11. She was always willing to participate and follow up and help in any way she could, sharing her expertise on topics at hand. Kathy knows and understands the center's mission statement and has a deep understanding of the organization's policies, procedures, and processes, and thank Kathy very much and wish her the best in her upcoming work. Bob Sanders, a member of the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, or MMPC. What's that stand for again? McDowell Mountain Preserv-- just didn't sound right. Sorry about that. Bob Sanders has been a great benefit to the Fountain Hills by contributing his efforts and knowledge in improving the safety and enjoyment of the Fountain Hills Preserve. Bob was instrumental in naming the Snorrin Trail in the preserve. He also helped in many of the commission's endeavors, including manning the information booths at the town fairs. However, through Bob's efforts and guidance, our preserve is one of the safest mountain preserves in the state. Bob designed the informational plaques at various trailheads, spent many hours in deterring elevation distances and trail descriptions. There were many hours in planning, digging holes for signs and markers, and installing the signs and markers. As a result, there are 170 informational signs and emergency markers on the six miles of trails in Fountain Hills Preserve. Due to his efforts and the efforts of others, the first responders, fires and sheriff, think these improvements will save lives and increase the enjoyment of our citizens and others who will hike, bike, and just appreciate the many other benefits of our preserve. So, thank you, Bob. Mr. Bedell from our Parks and Recreation Commission, he serves the community, has been active commissioner for five years and was co-chair for two terms. Fred is recognized in the most recent past for his contributions to the greening of our park in downtown. He has been involved from the inception, generating plans, fundraisers, and reports for the council, commissioners, and community. He has also put in endless hours in the physical sowing of the seeds and planting of the trees. As a commissioner, he has served in the Finance Committee for several terms, working closely with the Parks and Recreation Director and staff, and he has been a willing volunteer and always available to serve his community. Fred finds time for all his community service and still maintains his decent handicap and his love of golf. Fred's cheerful attitude, ideas, good advice, and active participation with Parks and Recreation Commission will be sorely missed, however, I'm certain he will continue to see Fred contributing in the community in other capacities between golf outings. Thanks, Fred. And Amy Sanders, Parks and Recreation Youth Commissioner. Amy served as Parks and Rec Youth Commissioner for two terms, acting as liaison between Parks and Rec and the community high school. During her term, she concentrated on identifying and expanding teen activities. She initiated a survey determining the students' recreation interest, and then proceeded to help implement those programs in concert with the school district and the recreation department. Amy's successes was well evidenced by the increased attendance in these recommended events. Good job, Amy, in representing the teen recreational interest. And Ed Zizak of the Senior Services Advisory Commission. He's a leader in establishing SeniorNet, as well as serving very capably for over six years as Senior Services Advisory Commissioner. Ed was committed to the Home Delivered Meals Program that has served thousands of meals to incapacitated citizens in Fountain Hills. Ed gave his time and wisdom to help guide the seniors in Boomer Center to the largest membership in history of our great town. And thank you, Ed, for your service, and we'll miss you well and your volunteer work to come. And Larry Malek from our Senior Services Advisory Commission. Larry began serving on the Senior Services Advisory Commission in 2006. Larry contributed his time and considerable talent to the senior services transition from a private effort to the town's highly functioning center it is today. During Larry's time, the senior services advisory commission and the senior Boomer Center grew to over 1,200 members. Larry contributed innovative thoughts to whatever issues the commissioners were addressing, and we thank Larry for your concern for the wants and needs of Fountain Hills' adult, active adult community. So, we do have a lot of recognitions and a lot of thanks to give tonight. And to those commissioners that were able to come tonight, please come on forward. I'll meet you down here at the dais and give you your certificate. Thanks, Bill. All right, there are more here than I initially thought. Good to see you guys. Amy, I've got a note here to give you, two of them. Amy, thank you very much for your service. And if you guys stay up here, I'm not sure if Bob or we get a picture of whom. Ms. Sanders is here. Here are your two, Amy. Thank you very much. Ed, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll come shake your hand in a minute. Larry, thank you, sir. Mr. Bedell, Fred, nice to see you. Kathy, all right, perfect. You're all here. Come on up here if you wouldn't mind. Oh, Bob is here as well. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fred, Larry, thank you very much. Amy, thank you. Ed, nice to see you. Kathy, thank you very much. One up, if you don't mind getting a picture. Appreciate it. Let's go over here so you can actually see Fountain Hills.
Yeah, there you go. They're ugly guys, if you don't want to come down.
There you go. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. We'll get Ms. Jacobs as well.
I actually did something else today.
Okay, one comment from Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just a little announcement, Monday, May 5th is our mayor's birthday. I looked it up on Facebook, so I know his age, but I won't tell. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say happy birthday, and I know you'll have a great weekend and a great day, and if Kathy will indulge us, we can sing happy birthday to Jay.
We're all going to sing happy birthday to Jay.
Yes.
Happy birthday to Jay. Happy birthday to Jay.
Can I hear Andrew?
Happy birthday to Jay. Happy birthday to you.
Yay, see? Thank you. The best singing council ever, don't you agree, Scouts? Aren't they amazing? Thank you very much. Oh, a little. Ooh, treats. At my chair. Thank you very much. Birthdays are good, aren't they, guys? Yes, it's a good thing. Good thing. Cakes good, treats are good. Thank you very much. Very nice. And now we will move into call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards tonight?
Yes, Mayor, we have one card. Bob Deppi.
Welcome, Mr. Deppi, how are you?
I'm doing fine, thank you. My name is Bob Deppi, 11 Boulder Drive. I've got an issue on town codes, and each of you have a handout that I intend to read from. This is Town Code 1022 and D, which says, "The following specific conditions are declared to be a public nuisance: any noxious weeds or uncultivated plants, whether growing or otherwise; weed, sawgrass, uncultivated shrubs, and growth higher than 24 inches, or which present a fire hazard." Note the two conditions here. 10-15 says, "Any person owning any real property shall not allow any part to become so incitely to substantially detect from the appearance of the immediate neighborhood or to tend to threaten the safety of the immediate neighborhood." 10-18, penalties, any person in violation of any provision subject to Article 1-8. 1-8 basically says it's up to a $2,500 fine. The issue is, I initiated a complaint against the owner of 16239 North Boulder. He has wild desert broom weeds growing up to six feet high among various forms of cactus plants in front and the side yards. I gave a complaint. Roy Jaffe responded to me that the desert broom were now considered part of the so-called desert landscaping by owner and is okay. Three years ago, a similar complaint was issued, and the owner was forced to cut down the desert broom. If this is now a desert landscaping, then the rocks that are in the yard, both the front and side, should be removed. You don't have rocks in the desert. On January 5th, I elevated the issue to Julie Getty. She responded that there is no code violation. The issue of what type of plants and the effect on neighbors is not one that code enforcement has authority to regulate, despite the codes I just read off to you. I then questioned the issue of the fire hazard, and Julie responded, "The fire department has determined that there is a moderate risk to the property owner, a very limited risk to your property because of the distance between the desert broom and your house." I responded to Julie. The 72-inch-high desert broom in front of, in front is 14 feet from my front tree, was next to my house. On the side, the desert broom is three feet from my wall and sits directly under a tree overhang, which is again next to my house, a different tree. There are two violations here: weeds over 24 inches and the fire hazard to me.
You're almost done, you can finish up.
Okay, thanks. My last response, and Julie finally admitted the real issue. Code has stated that the landscaping does not present a code violation unless we want to enforce all weeds in the town. In other words, the town has decided not to enforce the above cited codes. What if Sheriff Joe said he decided not to enforce speed limits because he did not have enough deputies? Would you be upset about that? Again, I believe I have a legal recourse here against the town, and I want you to enforce your codes. And Mayor, I'd like to have a response from you, if that's okay. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Deppi, thank you very much. Anyone else call the public?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. And we move on to the consent agenda items. I'll look for a motion to approve the consent items as listed.
Still move.
And let me go through them, I guess, first. We got a motion. I'll read them briefly. Item one, consideration of approving town council meeting minutes from January 26th and February 16th, 2012. Item two, consideration for approval of resolution 2012-13, abandoning whatever right, title, interest the town has in certain portions of public utility easement located at 10406 North Demerit Drive. Item three, consideration of approving special event liquor license application submitted by Valerie Ann Stasic, representing the Fountain Hills Theater, Inc., for the purpose of a fundraiser to be held on Saturday, March 18th, 2012, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. And item four, consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Sam LD Coffee, representing the Sons of Amvet Squadron 7, for the purpose of a fundraiser to be held on March 17th, 2012, from 10:00 to 6:00. Could I get a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Leger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Mayor 70.
Thank you very much. Move on to the regular agenda. We have a short agenda tonight, regular agenda, but we have item five, consideration of ordinance 12-02, amendment to the Town Fountain Hills Code, Chapter 1, Article 1 through 8, and Chapter 12, by creating portions related to enforcement of civil violations. Andrew.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as we discussed at your last meeting, we have a very large number of violations within the town code that are actually misdemeanor violations. So, it's a crime to commit any of those violations, including the aforementioned weed violations. What has been challenging is to actually get to enforcement of crimes for things that are sometimes relatively minor. Without a civil enforcement mechanism, however, the code enforcement folks don't really have that option. A few of the provisions in our code, when we've amended them over the years, have included civil enforcement provisions. This is intended to put that same mechanism in the general enforcement so that as the council comes to things in the future that you want to decriminalize, that you can do so by referencing this section rather than having to repeat this over and over and over in the code. It's meant to give you some consistency in those provisions and to have the flexibility to try and make the punishment make a little more sense for the type of violation that is. The other thing that this does is it has a progressive enforcement mechanism whereby there's a notice of violation that precedes even a civil violation, so that there's a chance for people to remedy it prior to actually being cited. And after that, the only time you get to criminal on things that are not otherwise deemed as misdemeanors will be recidivist. If you're over and over and over again refusing to comply, then you can get booted up into criminal again. But for the most part, this is intended to comply more with the compliance-based version of code enforcement that the town's been following for a while, and to create the mechanisms for you all to decide which things are criminal and which things are civil. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, good. Thanks, Andrew. Can we get a motion?
Mayor?
Yep.
Move the town council adopt ordinance number 1202, an amendment to the Fountain Hills Town Code, Chapter 1, Article 1 through 8, and Chapter 12, creating provisions related to enforcement of civil violations.
Thank you, do a second. Second, thank you. Questions or discussion, council, anyone from the public first? Let me check on that.
No cards, sir.
Councilmember Cantino.
Thank you. What does this do for the business people? You and I have talked about this before on the misdemeanors and also different things that's going to happen. How is this going to be better, or is this not going to do anything for the community?
Andrew.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cantino, I would hope that nothing we do up here would do nothing for the community.
Well, I didn't mean it like that, you know that.
I just want to make sure we understand what we're doing here. This is establishing the framework by which you can then designate other things as either criminal, as they currently are today, or as civil. Without this mechanism, everything in your code is criminal. So, zoning violation, spitting on the sidewalk, weeds, everything is a criminal violation today, under the way the code is written. This is just creating the opportunity for you to designate something as civil. It doesn't go back through the code and change any of those provisions yet. So, for instance, if you want to change zoning violations as a whole to civil, what we'll need to do next is come back with an amendment to the zoning ordinance that says violations of this code which are either civil pursuant to this provision of the town code. This is just the framework. This is the foundation upon which then you choose as a council which things you want to make civilly enforced rather than criminally enforced.
So, we do this tonight, what do we change after that?
Whichever provisions of the code the town council decides are things that are good to be decriminalized. We've talked before, you and I have, about zoning violations. That's a very common one in the state that people have backed off of a number of the zoning violations to have only civil enforcement for most of them. Some of them, like storage of hazards, materials, and other things, we're going to need to keep those as criminal, but that's a general area. As you come to different areas of the code that you amend, those areas can then be considered on how you want to treat them as civil or as criminal as well. But it wasn't intended that this amended anything other than setting up the mechanism for you. So, then the next step is identify those areas you want to create as civil infractions, and we'll bring those back one at a time or in groups or however you want to do that.
So, the town decides who gets a criminal defense and who doesn't?
The town council will decide what is charged as a misdemeanor.
But I mean, if Roy comes out and this is diligent to keep complaining about things, then he'll say, "Well, I'm going to cite you, it's going to be a criminal offense." Does he have a right to do that?
No, there's no discretion that way. The only way that an infraction that is normally civil can become criminal is if it's repeated. If there are a repeated number of civil citations that are not complied with, then it can kick up into the misdemeanor. But most things will probably fit in the civil-only violations, and then those are required to have a notice of violation prior to even issuing the civil. So, it's meant to be notice, chance for compliance, if no compliance, civil, chance for compliance, repeated civil until you get to the point where it's considered recidivist, and then it can kick up to a misdemeanor.
But if you have, ever come back to compliance every time, doesn't the owner of a business have a right to say, "No, that's not right, I disagree with you"?
The civil, well, let me make sure we understand civil procedure that'll go along with it. If you challenge the order of civil infraction, the town will appoint a civil hearing officer to hear it, just like you would if you go to the court. We don't have that person on staff, we don't have a contractor with that person. We need to see first if we're going to have to have someone who is a go-to person on a contract basis, or if it can be on a spot basis, when we see how many kind of violations we have. For the time being, a civil hearing will be by spot basis. We'll appoint a hearing officer who would be appropriate to the type of violation that it would be.
I just think sometimes the businesses get the shaft, and I just want to make sure we get protected.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cantino, businesses, individual citizens, everyone is treated equally under this code.
I disagree, but I'll go along with that.
Andrew, on the, what you're mentioning, the process, and we don't have someone as a hearing officer to hear the civil, how often does that come up? Do you have an idea of a number per year?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it depends upon the community. In communities with fairly consistent and well-maintained code enforcement processes, very few, mainly because most of the people who are contacted by code enforcement folks are interested in compliance. They're not interested in spending time, energy, or money fighting against the civil citation, or even having a civil citation. So, the code enforcement agencies that we represent in other communities that have implemented this kind of a process have a high 90s percent of compliance with the initial notice of violation. Beyond that, it's sometimes necessary to go into civil citation. Those are typically then another percentage on top of the high 90s to where you get to a very small number who will even contest it at all. The idea being compliance is where we want to be, we don't want to be in citation business. I don't know that in the, gosh, six or seven years that a city side of Avondale, you know, 85,000 people has used this process, I don't know that we've used a hearing officer yet.
So, the compliance through citation has usually ended up with compliance, or does it go jump civil to criminal?
It almost always gets to the compliance coming before you get to civil citation.
Okay.
The incidents that are civil citations are few, and then the incidents that go beyond that to criminal are even fewer. It's typically someone who is just not going to comply regardless of what you do, and there are very few.
Just to put this one into what we're trying to do here, into more perspective for more of the laypeople like me, and you deal with the laws, you know, every day. But the, what we're doing here appears to me, and what I've read and what we've been moving towards, is to give us the ability to make things lesser than a criminal citation. So, we're looking to go to step it down as far as the, any type of business impact, for example, as Councilmember Cantino has shared. What are we doing to businesses if there's somebody out of compliance? It seems like we're not immediately having to put a criminal penalty against them, but rather a civil, which is a much lesser penalty. Is that generally what we're looking to consider here?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The code in the town is based on a model from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns that if you look around the state, there are probably of the 91 cities and towns, there are probably 50 of them that still have the roots of that code. And they, you adopt it because when you're first starting as a town, you just don't have the resources to go out and draft a whole town code, a whole zoning ordinance or otherwise. The default in that is criminal misdemeanor, just because it's impossible to know what the community's customization will be necessary to do. That used to be the way that everything was done. Since that time, cities have found that it's much more effective to try and have a more active, compliance-based approach and not have criminal citations out there for folks. Because even if someone goes to the judge and the judge says, "Well, this is fairly minor, I only think this should be a very small fine rather than $2,500 per offense," it's still a criminal offense. And that's severe in some cases. So, this is giving you the tool to be less severe in those cases where you think it's appropriate, and to make that determination as you go through your code.
All right, thanks, Andrew. Councilmember Elke.
And I think it's important, if I understand you correctly, Andrew, is the, what we're doing is we're setting the framework right now. It doesn't automatically change those codes that the council may deem at some future date that should be civil. So, what's important, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, is to agendize or to have a committee or staff, or not to begin looking at the code so that the council can go through and say, "This should be a civil penalty, this should stay as is as criminal," and so forth. So, this isn't really making any changes other than stating unless it's specifically specified what the charge is in there, whether it's civil or criminal.
That's correct. Until the council goes back to the point of amending the other code provisions, this is dormant, just waiting to be used. And because the code is, even though a small code for a small town, it's still voluminous. And so, it's going to take some time to identify those areas you want to decriminalize. There'll be some that'll be more obvious. The zoning ordinance is one that is very commonly decriminalized, and something that we'd be happy to look at. There are a couple provisions in there that we'd want to maintain as criminal, and we recommend which ones those are. But otherwise, I think this is exactly that. It's the framework by which you can make that decision with each and every provision that comes in front of you.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Dickey.
Mayor, Andrew, what if it was driven by an actual event? Would you have the ability to change it at that point, even if you hadn't gone through, like Tate was saying, and changed it already? So, say something came up, and then you wanted to change it. Are you still allowed to do that even if you haven't already gotten to that section or didn't do that yet?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, it would not affect the violation that was, that caused us to notice something that needed to be changed, but certainly that would cause the next thing to be changed. What typically happens in those cases where the judge will come upon something that seems to be a bit severe if charged as misdemeanor, his discretion is usually very liberal in terms of ensuring that the penalties assessed are more likely what the civil penalties would be. This mechanism is really just intended to not make it so intimidating for people, that you have a process that encourages them to never get cited.
That comes from Hanson.
I think Andrew had a good example in his staff report that kind of made it clear to me as far as what we were doing. And it just says, "Although a criminal penalty may be appropriate for some acts under the code, for example, discharge firearms, other acts may be more appropriately penalized through a civil penalty process," and again, the idea of spitting on the sidewalks. So, I think, you know, we can see this as a positive thing, and it might also be an opportunity to, in the review process, to identify some of the codes that we aren't really enforcing, that might be better off left out of the code. Kind of kill two birds with one stone.
Good, good. Councilmember Elke.
Andrew, what, if a code, if a code is not specifically identified as a misdemeanor or civil, and it's just left blank, and just says it's a violation of the town code to commit this offense, under this, under the code that we have currently, and certainly it wouldn't, from my reading of this, it wouldn't change it either, it would be a class one misdemeanor, is that correct?
That's correct. The default's still misdemeanor.
So, for example, if we have, if spitting on the sidewalk did not specifically say it's a civil infraction, which we now have the discretion to do it a little easier, or didn't say it was a class two didn't say it was a class-two misdemeanor or a class-three misdemeanor, by default it's a class-one misdemeanor, six months in jail maximum. Not that I think our judge would give anybody six months in jail for that, but it is a class-one misdemeanor, which is the most serious form of misdemeanor. Just two other questions, if I could, Jim. You had mentioned the hearing officer and having a process for the notice of violations and having an appeal process for businesses that may be served with a notice of violation, some type of appeal. Would there be a mechanism in place that we could enforce or enact that would allow our judge to serve as that hearing officer for those notices?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, that's precisely what a lot of communities do, simply because you have a person seated and available with the knowledge of the town, with the knowledge of the code, and perfectly appropriate for the judge to sit in that role.
So if a business owner disagreed with a notice of violation, they would then have a remedy if we were to pass some town code to that effect?
Yeah.
Okay. And just a second question, Jeff, if I could. With respect to the amendments to this, to the town code that are being proposed, did you receive input from our town prosecutor?
I spoke with our town prosecutor early on about the process and we generally talked about it and I haven't had the chance to talk to them specifically about the language. I called them a while back and haven't been able to make contact, so.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments? We've got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero.
Good.
I'm sorry, I don't. I thought I didn't hear the second, but I remembered after.
We didn't.
Sorry.
Oh, we didn't have a second?
No.
Yes, we did.
We looked it up.
It was the minutes where I, or the--
I may have issued not in there.
It was the consent that I took, the motion and then the second after. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Item six, consideration of fourth amendment to the professional services agreement to HDR Engineering Design Contract for Shea Boulevard-Saguaro Boulevard Intersection Improvement Project. This PSA amendment, number four, increases the project design cost by $50,139 and extends the contract time to August 31, 2012. Randy, how are you?
Thank you. Mayor, council, back in December, the town council approved a, by resolution, an amendment to the development agreement of Fire Rock Plaza, which is shown on the screen down in the lower left. That property had been foreclosed on by its lender, which is Wells Fargo Bank, and in negotiations with the bank, you approved that they would pay the town $200,000 to complete the offsite improvements that the original developer had not completed. Now, the town had previously contracted with HDR Engineering to construct improvements at the Shea and Saguaro intersection and running both directions on Shea, which this is actually a part of that area, and so it makes sense to put this work into that contract. In fact, HDR's proposal was actually a part of the negotiations on that contract. There are four different types of improvements that are in this and those are all shown and numbered. The first one is a piece of sidewalk. The improvements are in blue. The improvements that are already proposed but not existing are in red on the board. So this includes a sidewalk over Sirius Wash, interconnect conduit, and a retaining wall there at Sirius Wash as well as interconnect conduit towards the east, which is on the far right side, and then some interconnect conduit at the west end of the project, which is not shown on this. There are a couple of things that, minor pieces of this that were not a part of the Fire Rock Plaza, but we put them in just for brevity of the contract amendments. Staff does recommend approval of this. The cost of this would seem fairly high in relationship to the estimated construction cost, but the majority of the work on this is the engineering cost to design the retaining wall over the Sirius Wash box culvert. We've got deep boreings to see what the soil is down there and then we've got high retaining walls with, that have both over the box culvert and adjacent to the box culvert on the fill that was put in with the box culvert and then on natural ground. So we've got a bunch of different conditions, a bunch of different engineering issues to deal with. It's going to be quite a, I'm glad I'm not designing. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thanks, Randy. Anyone from the public on this side?
No, ma'am.
All right, can we get a motion on this fourth amendment?
Mayor, move to approve contract amendment number four to HDR Engineering, sorry, design contract for the Shea Boulevard-Saguaro Boulevard Improvement Project in the amount of $50,139.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thanks. Any questions for Randy? Seth? Councilmember Cantino.
Thank you. Randy, this has been going on for a long time. How come we just got the fourth amendment on this one? I mean, it seems like the dollars keep going up all the time. Why wasn't this discussed? We discussed some of this stuff back in December.
Mayor, Councilman Cantino, that's when you approved the development agreement amendment and then from there, then we put together the rest of the change order packet. So I had to go through legal for the change order and so now it's coming before you.
If I could, Randy, the, we approved the $200,000 just maybe a month ago, month and a half ago, perhaps, December, which was the agreement to, with the bank to give us the funds that we're going to utilize to pay for this, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
And then the change in this amendment number four is expand the scope of work for that one firm to do the actual work that we plan on doing with that $200,000, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
So just to, I, I was thinking the same thing as Councilmember Cantino, is that it's more money. It's more money for the amendment on the contract, but the work is the same work that we expected to pay for previously. Now it's being broken out as to who's going to be getting the funds, correct? Andrew?
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the work that's being designed here would have been work that would have been completed by the property owner had the development successfully gone forward. The bank negotiated to get out of that obligation in the development agreement and as a result then, because we had a project already in process next to this, it was added to that to be able to do those improvements necessary to complete out what the developer otherwise would have done.
So is it, we may not have known the exact dollar amount for this, but is this in alignment with what that $200,000 would have covered or we were expecting to have covered?
Some of it is and some of the amount that they were going to have paid would have been for traffic signal improvements at that corner and the traffic signal at that corner is no longer necessary. So the amount wouldn't be exactly the same, but the amount of those funds will apply to what the developer would have had to build.
All right. I think we may be more confused now, but the, this $50,000, was it budgeted? Is it expected? And where's the money coming from?
Yes, Mayor, so is budgeted, was expected. The money is in the capital projects fund, which is where the money from the developer went.
Okay, that helps, Mayor. Any other questions? Councilmember Leger.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, do we anticipate this being the last piece of design work to get this project rolling?
Mayor, Councilwoman Leger, yes, I don't anticipate anything else.
So when we look at this project from our property line on the east prior to the B-line up to 1,000 feet beyond technology, which is widening both sides, improving the asphalt, the sidewalks, so forth and so on, when do you anticipate this project will start?
Mayor, Councilman Leger, this agreement also extends the design contract through the end of August, so I'm hoping that will be under construction late fall on this.
Okay, and this does include that, the enhancements of that intersection, Saguaro and Shea Boulevard?
Mayor, Councilwoman Leger, yeah, that's the centerpiece of it, if you will.
That's the centerpiece, okay. All right. We've been talking about it for a while, so it seems like we're getting close. Thank you, Randy. Thanks, Mayor.
Not the large project. I mean, this is a part of, of a how many million-dollar project that's primarily grant-funded?
Yes, Mayor, it's probably going to be about $3 million project, 70% funded by grant, the remainder of this $200,000 by this developer and $150,000 by McDot, so.
Good, well, it's good coordination, but it's been a long time in coming, but it's needed improvement on that intersection and it's great to have the grant money, so thank you. Any other questions on this piece, the fourth amendment? Mayor. I'm sorry, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Did you just say that we were thinking construction would start in the fall of 2012?
Mayor, Councilman Brown, yes, we could be under construction in the fall.
After the episode of running the sewer lines up and down our streets in the middle of high tourist season, I would really like to talk about starting them April, May, as they are departing town, to not have the congestion that we experienced while we were trying to run our sewer lines up and down Main Street.
And that's a good thing to consider, particularly in downtown area. I know Shea Boulevard area has other challenges in the summertime with all the boat traffic and folks going to the river and the lake. So what, as you guys understand, the impact on transportation through here, hopefully you can make the needed adjustments, although I know this is going to be a lengthy project.
Mayor, Councilman Brown, Mayor's absolutely right. I mean, we don't want to do this project in the winter, we don't want to do it in the summer and the fall and the spring are too short to do it in. And so we're damned if we do and damned if we don't whichever way we go, so we, whatever the, if the council would like to direct or just say, you know, you'd like to see it not go till spring, we can certainly do that.
I'd like, I think, we'd probably like it to go quickly when it gets to the line.
Okay.
Councilmember Brown.
So Randy, do we have any traffic studies that gives us counts and different months and a little history as to the travel on Shea?
Mayor, Councilman Brown, we, I won't say we have done one every month, but most of our counts have been in the winter. We've done a few over the years in the summertime. Certainly traffic is much less in the summer, but it's boat traffic in this, particularly in this area.
The boat business is not good right now. I hope it picks up.
Any other questions for, or direction that we want to add to this? All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero.
Thank you, Randy. And I was going to tell our scouts, we're nearing the end. They could, they almost made it through the entire meeting. Council Discussion Direction Acting Town Manager, Mark Mayer. Nothing there?
Mayor Schlum, with my one-day tenure, I do not have anything to add.
All right. Any report on recent activity? Any duck updates, perhaps?
We are scheduled for next week to do the removals.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Thanks for filling in. Councilmember Elke.
I would just ask maybe the staff have some follow-up regarding the amendments that we talked about as far as the town code is concerned and we start that discussion and that process sooner rather than later.
Good. Excellent, good. We'll do that, make note of that, make sure Ken Buchanan coming in on Monday and knows the, of council discussion direction from this meeting. And we will have a new town manager at our next meeting and it'll start on Monday, so if you see him around town, welcome him to town, I'm sure we all will, and give him a couple days before the public expects to start meeting with him and the organizations, I'm sure he'll like to get plugged into, but Julie Giddy's not here tonight, we'll recognize her later, but she did a tremendous job as our interim town manager and we're excited that she'll help Ken get a fast start, Julie back at her deputy town manager position, so thank her very, very much and the needed vacation she's on today. And Mark?
Oh, Mark is a good luck charm. Good meetings he presided on.
Yeah, it's been very fascinating, Mark. Very good meeting.
I have no control over this.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think that's it. That will look for a motion to adjourn. A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.